Thank you for joining us. The Columbian Editorial Board is pleased to welcome candidates for Vancouver City Council, position two. I'm Greg Jane, the editorial page editor, and I will let the members of the editorial board introduce themselves. We'll go Scott and Jody.
Jody Campbell, hi.
Scott Campbell here.
Craig?
Good.
Craig, you there?
Yeah, I am. So I'm Craig Brown, the editor of the Columbian.
And then Ben?
And Ben Campbell, publisher of the Columbian. Thanks to you two for being here.
And Kelly, why don't you introduce yourself?
I'm Kelly Hare. I cover politics for the Columbian, and I'll be reporting on this meeting and watching it, but I won't be participating or asking questions.
And then, as Amy mentioned earlier, we are recording this. We will post it unedited online. And one final note, there is a third candidate in this race, Tammy Martin. She did not respond to any of our inquiries, and so we are pleased to have the two of you here today. And with that, we'll start, why don't you take just one to two minutes, introduce yourselves and explain why you are running? And then, after that, we'll get into specific policy questions. So we'll start with Cara.
Okay, thanks, guys. Thanks for having me today. My experience is that I've been a president of my HOA board. I'm currently on my current HOA board, so I know that there are times where it's hard to get things passed, but I'm definitely up for that challenge. I served six years as a workplace coordinator, where I went over million-dollar contracts for the city of Portland, companies I'm not allowed to name because of NDAs. And previous to that, I worked at Clark College in the ESL and GED department, so helping people get English lessons or helping people get their GEDs and then helping them move on into other college programs. I have an accounting degree. I've lived in Clark County for about 20 years, and so I'm just wanting to help out and do my part.
Great, thank you. Eric?
Good afternoon. I'm Eric Paulson. I'm running for reelection for Vancouver City Council, position number two, because I love Vancouver. I'm a resident of Vancouver for over 40 years. It's where I was raised, built a career, a home and a family. I'm a proud graduate of Hudson's Bay High School and even more proud parent of two young adults who also graduated from Vancouver Public Schools. My daughter's a graduate of the Vancouver School of Arts and Academics, and my son is a second-generation Eagle from Hudson's Bay. I've lived in several areas around town, having been raised in northwest Vancouver. We purchased our first home in Fisher's Landing, and we've lived for the last 15 years in the Du Bois Park neighborhood of central Vancouver. A little over 10 years ago, after hearing the call to serve the city, I was fortunate to have been appointed to the planning commission, where I served for eight years, six as chair. During that time, in addition to learning about planning and land use, I also refined my ability to work collaboratively, listen with an open mind to community members and colleagues, find common ground, build consensus, and ultimately move issues forward. This thoughtful approach to public service is what I brought to city council when I was appointed two and a half years ago and have continued to demonstrate while on council. I'm neither an ideologue nor a firebrand. I seek broad perspectives to understand all facets of an issue, to make decisions that provide the greatest benefit to the greatest number throughout our community. I'm running for reelection because this is a pivotal moment in Vancouver, and we need thoughtful leaders who understand our community and the issues facing it, and have a proven record of leadership, like me. Those issues, which I imagine we will be discussing in greater detail this afternoon, include homelessness and housing, transportation, economic development, and increasing the number of family wage jobs in our community. It's great to be with you this afternoon. I'm looking forward to the conversation.
Great. Thanks again to both of you for joining us. Start out with kind of a broad overview of how has the city effectively responded to the pandemic and where should it go from here? What has it done well? What hasn't it done well? And we'll start with Cara.
So I currently work as an essential worker. So I've seen firsthand, having the mask mandate before, you know, we had 70% or 60% of people vaccinated, was a great decision. But that wasn't something that the city council did. The saying, you don't know what you don't know. I would have to ask a little more questions about what actually the Vancouver City Council did, if anything, because I believe it was more mandated by, you know, the state.
Well, then we'll go to Eric. What has the city done and where does it go from here?
Thank you. You know, this pandemic has been a historic event, and it's affected all of us, but some of it disproportionately. And it's been painful to live through and see the health effects that people have suffered and loss of life, as well as the economic effects that people have suffered. And, you know, what we've learned is that there are those in our community who have been disproportionately affected by the pandemic itself and who have, some have been recipients of some of the programs that have been implemented at the local, state, and federal level, and others, you know, haven't necessarily been able to participate as fully. It definitely has, as Cara mentioned, been a response that's been coordinated at all levels of government, federal government, and there's more of that coming online now with CARES funding that the city's been a recipient of and will be deploying strategically to make investments going forward. But as far as what the city actually has done already, given what limited tools were available to us, I think that the city should be proud of our response to the COVID recovery. We waived the business license surcharge fees for businesses throughout the pandemic, and we've extended those waivers to restaurants and other businesses that continue to be disproportionately affected by the pandemic. We also implemented, and we're one of the first communities to implement the Street Eats program, so that eating establishments and other establishments were able to take advantage of outdoor facilities to continue to serve customers, to continue to, you know, keep folks employed and keep their businesses thriving. You know, 80% of the jobs in our community are from small businesses, and so it's essential that, in a time like this, we do everything we can to support those small businesses. As we go forward, as I mentioned previously, we do have some considerable amount of federal money, $32 million, that we are and will be receiving and have quite a bit of time to decide what to do with. And I'm looking forward to working with my colleagues on council to make smart strategic decisions about how to invest that money so that we can benefit disproportionately those who disproportionately were negatively affected during the COVID pandemic.
Well, I want to go back to Cara on that. So as Eric mentioned, there is some federal money from the CARES program. How would you recommend the city spend that?
That's a really great question. I would honestly have to do some research and reach out to my community and see where people are hurting the most. I mean, as Eric mentioned, small businesses have been really hurt, restaurants have been hurt. There's so many places that money could be spent that we'd really need to look down at, like, what is the best option? So that would be something I would have to look into.
Thank you. Craig, you have anything?
Sure. So talk a little bit about the Affordable Housing Program that the taxpayers funded a few years ago and how the city's been using the money. Has it been an effective program and what could be done to improve it? So let's start with Cara, please.
Sure. So affordable housing is a huge issue, and I don't think that we're doing a good enough job. And I believe that there are kickbacks being given to developers. And...
Now, when you say kickbacks, what do you mean? And do you have evidence of that?
Like tax credits to developers, but then they also go on to just raising prices. So I, I, there's a real no right answer. We're in a housing crisis right now with affordable housing, and we really need to look at how we can properly manage giving assistance to developers, but also making sure that that is being passed on to the home buyers or renters.
So I just want to make sure I understand. So you would oppose the city providing incentives to developers to build low-cost housing or low-rent housing? Is that what I heard you say?
No, no, I would definitely not oppose that. I would just make sure that the laws are written in a better way, that they were held accountable to the rents and/or the housing prices.
Okay, so you feel like that isn't part of the current law, then?
Um, I feel like there are some loopholes.
Okay, thank you. I understand now. So Eric, what's your response?
So the Affordable Housing Fund was Proposition One, which was passed by the voters of Vancouver back in 2016. Prior to its passage, it was recommended by the Affordable Housing Task Force, of which I was a member, then serving as a planning commissioner. Very supportive of the Affordable Housing Fund, I believe it's done a great deal of good in our community. About $7 million a year that we have to invest in creating supply of new housing, much of which we deploy through the Vancouver Housing Authority and other partners in the community. The majority of that money is not going directly to developers, but through partners to create what I would characterize as subsidized housing. It's also available for rehabilitation, and we have also used it to give grants, to provide vouchers and other incentives to actually keep people housed, so that they don't fall into homelessness and further exacerbate that issue within our community. Looking forward on the fund, it does expire in 2023, and council has agreed that beginning next year, we're going to have almost a year-long conversation about, has the fund been effective? How has it been used? What have been the successes? What, if anything, would we do differently? Were we to authorize a similar fund moving forward? To my way of thinking, the affordable housing crisis has not gotten better. It's only worsened in that time period that it's been in place. And so I think that there is still a need in our community. But I think it's also true that, over that same time period, the issue of homelessness has come into our consciousness in a much more profound way. And so I would like for the community to have a conversation about using those funds in a way that can continue to create capacity for and units in our community that are available to folks who have lower incomes, but also to create some revenue streams that we could use to address the homelessness crisis in our community.
Are there loopholes in the current law? Are developers able to get money from that for saying they're going to build affordable housing and then not do it?
So that's most often the conversation about what developers benefit from or don't benefit from relates to the use of the multifamily tax exemption or the MFTE program. And we have been having a conversation about both the use of it, its ongoing use, as well as the income level for which it's appropriate. My way of thinking on the multifamily tax exemption is this. When you look at housing, and this is a very oversimplified look at it, but there are fundamentally three segments of the population who need housing. There are those at the very lowest levels of income who need truly subsidized housing, where the government is actually funding the construction of the housing and continuing to subsidize it indefinitely because it cannot be constructed affordably enough for folks to afford that their income. And that's just a function of types of housing, building costs, and so on and so forth. In the middle, there's a group of folks who can afford housing at a certain price point, but not quite market level. And that's where the MFTE can be very useful. And then, of course, at the other end of the spectrum are folks who can afford market-rate housing, whether that's a home or a rental opportunity. The MFTE conversation, first and foremost, it's important to understand that the MFTE is a tool to create density. It was created to create density. Its primary use is to create density. It has successfully created density in our downtown core so successfully that we are at the point now, that tipping point, where we can proudly proclaim that we're going to have a grocery store in downtown Vancouver, and we've been waiting for decades to get that. And without the MFTE, which all of the housing in downtown Vancouver that's multifamily would use the MFTE to be built, we would not have what the grocers call rooftops necessary to support the grocery store. Okay, so when it comes to the different levels of MFTE, there are income conversations that we have. I personally feel that the council made the right decision in keeping the income level at the Portland area median, because I don't believe, based on the data that we were shown, that the tool would continue to be used at those lower income levels. Much as we'd like to, you just cannot build and offer housing without subsidies using just tax abatements. As far as loopholes go, we do, when the city of Vancouver uses the MFTE and a developer makes a commitment to keep something affordable for a period of time, we do inspect to make sure that those rents are continued to be honored for the duration of that commitment.
Thank you.
So I'm curious, the affordable housing obviously is a big part of the homelessness issue, which has visibly grown in the past couple of years. What other steps do we need to do to address homelessness? And we'll start with Cara.
Okay, this is a long story. When I, I grew up in Canada. I used to volunteer every summer in Calgary, Alberta, at an organization called The Mustard Seed, which was an organization that helps every step away of the way with homelessness. We would go for the summer, we would sleep on gym floor, on mats, by ourselves, but we would get in line every day to eat with every single other, maybe not even homeless, but anybody who needed to eat. So I met a lot of people along with the way of that journey. I think that there is a really big need, and this has been addressed many times, but for more mental health treatments and more substance abuse treatments. And out of the two of the three substance abuse treatments in Vancouver, two of them accept state insurance. However, most homeless people do not have state insurance, and that's just because that's not what's important to them. They're working on getting their basic needs met, and they don't have with COVID. They would have to do it online. They don't have internet. There's so many barriers, and it's not something that necessarily might be important to them. I mean, they can absolutely go to the hospital or call an ambulance, and that's just, you know, a fee that's tacked on that they probably won't pay or won't have the means to pay. But I think that if we had funding for substance abuse programs that accepted people regardless of insurance, that if we had some way to provide some sort of grant for that, that we would, we would have more people going to those programs. Also, I feel like those programs, I've toured all three of them, and it feels like jail in some of them. You're locked in, you can't get out, you're, you have to line up to get medication at certain hours, even if you're sick, that, you know, you can't get medication until a certain time. People don't want to go and be treated that way. And I feel like substance abuse is a huge problem of homelessness. Furthermore, I feel that, you know, mental health is also a huge, huge, huge issue, and every homeless person has a different reason why they're homeless and different struggles. And until we can reach the root core of why they are homeless, instead of just, you know, feeding them and saying, you can, you know, sleep in the center for the night, we're not, we're not making progress. And we also want to address the people who are on the verge of becoming homeless. And again, it goes back to the affordable housing, and it goes back to making sure we have proper resources for people who, you know, do not have health insurance, that they can receive services so that they don't fall into that position. Thank you.
And so should the city pay for additional facilities, or what is the city's role in that?
Um, so I feel like there could get, there could be some money allotted in our budget to allowing the facilities. We have enough facilities, I believe, but for more funding so that people without insurance can go without the fear of having to pay it back or, you know, go bankrupt, or, you know, have this large fee stuck on them, that that's another barrier for them to get a job, because now they might have, you know, when they do get a paycheck, their wages will be garnished. Yes, I feel like the city should, in order to help with the problem that we have with homelessness, yes, the answer to your questions, yes, I do feel like the city should, should pay for more programs. And I think that it'll come back to actually more even out, because we won't be having, if we can solve some of the problems for some of the people, and I realize everybody cannot be helped, and everybody doesn't want help, but the money that is spent now just on, like, cleaning up, which is another issue I want to address, is about having garbage cans more prevalent in the city. I feel like there's a lot of times where there are people who are camping out, who are homeless, and I don't think that a lot of them want to leave their trash, but they don't really have another reasonable option to do it or to put it somewhere. And I think if we had more garbage cans throughout the city, that that would really help.
Okay, thank you. Eric, what other approach should we take to homelessness?
Really important question. And Cara, I applaud you for your work in understanding this issue. And we agree on the primary causation for those who are unhoused in our community. Each one has an individual circumstance that needs to be understood in order to help get them housed. But ultimately, it's generally a function of housing prices in some combination with a chemical dependency and/or mental health issue. Clark County is the lead agency when it comes to those latter two issues. So Clark County is chiefly tasked in our community with providing mental health services and providing chemical dependency services. That's why I'm a big proponent of the joint task force that the city and the county have entered into, so that we can collaborate to find solutions that we agree upon and collaborate to fund those solutions. I would not be in favor of the city building separate and distinct infrastructure in parallel with the county. That seems wasteful to me, that we would build infrastructure to provide the same services that the county is responsible for. Instead, when we agree on solutions as a joint body, would be very comfortable with the city making financial commitments to the infrastructure that's already in place. One other thing that I wanted to talk about on this is the whole idea of each person having an individual circumstance. And I think that's really important, that we continue to have robust outreach, so that we can meet folks where they are, understand where they're starting from, understand when they reach the moment when they're willing to find a solution, because it can take some time for folks to reach that point. And then having the capacity in our community to capitalize on that moment when it occurs to provide the services that that individual needs to help move them forward on their path to being housed. And so that's a big challenge in our community today, is we lack that capacity. And when I talk to the outreach workers, they say, gosh, I had a client who finally decided that it was time for them to pursue solutions for their chemical dependency, but it was a three-month wait for them to get into a facility that would help them with that. And by the time those three months go by, that person's probably going to be at a different point in their life and may or may not be as willing to pursue that solution for them. So creating capacity in our community so that we can help those who are unhoused when they're ready to be helped.
Okay, let's move on to, Eric, is the city doing enough about climate change? And what do you foresee for the coming climate plan?
The city is not moving quickly enough when it comes to the issue of climate. I think we're talking about the right things. I think we're going about the process in a patient and respectful manner. But, you know, in addition to being aspirational, I think there's a sense of urgency that we need to have as a council and as a community around this very important issue of climate. So I think it was an excellent start to put in place the temporary moratorium on fossil fuels, and I hope that council, permanent moratorium on fossil fuels as a first step. I also hope that we can agree and agree quickly on a climate action plan that is aspirational and puts the city in a position of leadership and showing the way to the community in terms of the things that will collectively come together to do, such as reducing emissions from vehicles, such as reducing emissions from buildings, which are the two primary contributors to greenhouse gas in our community. And sadly, we talk a lot about new construction and what can be done in new construction, but the bulk of the problem is with existing buildings. And so until we have the conversation about what can be done to reduce the emissions with existing buildings, both in the city, the city-owned buildings as well as community-owned buildings, and we're barely going to put a dent in it if all we're talking about is new construction. So I would like for us to have a greater sense of urgency. I want to have appropriate conversation with the community, but I think we need to find that balance point that balances the sense of urgency and the need to act quickly with the need to be inclusive with the process.
Cara, is the city doing enough to address climate change?
Climate change is a global issue, and as a city, I think that we are doing much better than many other communities. I, I think that we are between a rock and a hard place, because there are things that we could be doing, such as, it's been recommended before that all new buildings do not or cannot have natural gas. But as long as the government or the federal government continues to subsidize fossil fuels, it's not going to be affordable for, or it's not going to make, you know, the balance isn't going to be correct for people to want to use alternative methods of electricity. Another thing that has been brought up is requiring buildings to have better insulation, which would help reduce the electricity use both in the summer and the winter. But that would just, also, we have to take a step back and think, that sounds like a great idea, but how is that going to affect housing prices and affordable housing? And as Eric mentioned, and he's completely correct, you know, the new housing builds are only a small percentage of the problem that we have. So I think the city is, is doing a great job, but we could be doing better. We just need to make sure that we're doing it in a way that's not going to affect us negatively. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to ask about two recent issues that have come up, and I'm more interested in how the city addressed them and how the council addressed them, rather than the decisions themselves. And that's the paving, the bike lanes on Columbia Street, and the Tower Mall, the Heights Development. Do you think the city was effective in listening to constituents, or how could that process have been improved, or did it need to be improved? And we'll start with Cara.
I do have a lot of opinions on that. However, I don't know exactly what went on. Unfortunately, Eric has way more knowledge since he has been on city council, and I have not. So I don't know the answer to that question. Thank you.
Eric?
Columbia Street was a flawed process, and it was flawed because we were under a time constraint. Columbia had fallen into such disrepair that we had a decision to pave or not pave, and the longer we delayed that decision, the further into disrepair and the more cost it would incur to repair it in the end. So we had to make the best decision possible in a very tight timeframe. It doesn't make sense to pave a road and not do infrastructure and then go back and do it again. It's not cost-effective to do that. So we did our best to engage in a community conversation. There certainly were those in the community who did not agree with the approach that was being taken. We did convene a We did convene a task force to revisit the decision. That task force could not agree. Ultimately, came back to call with essentially the same set of information, in fact, just a more robust conversation. We do have a complete streets policy in the city of Vancouver, and it's important that we continue to accommodate all modes of transportation. Our best move at that point in time in the interest of public safety and the safety of the users of transportation was to move forward with that paving program and to include facility for micro-mobility, not just bikes, but scooters, electric scooters. There are transportation needs that we're going to have in the future as our community continues to age in place that can be accommodated by the infrastructure we're building today. As far as the heights go, I, I think that that is a process that has not been flawed. I think that that, that all parties that discuss this issue, even those who remain in opposition to certain aspects of what's been happening with the high-T development area have been very complimentary of the process and those who have facilitated the process. I think the difference with the heights is that there continue to be some differences of opinion in terms of what we actually do with that development, questions over building heights, questions over density, questions over parking capacity, questions over compatibility with the surrounding neighborhoods. I live here. In the wintertime, I can see the redevelopment area from my house when the trees have lost their leaves. I walk these neighborhoods and I talk to my neighbors about what's happening. What I generally hear is excitement. And that excitement, while it was tempered in the beginning, has grown in enthusiasm as people have come to understand what's possible. When we reinvest and we redevelop a pivotal area, an underutilized area in our city, and we create a space for the community to gather, we create a space where people can live and thrive. And we hopefully create a space where the surrounding neighborhoods can access amenities that we could only dream about and can't imagine today. And so I'm very supportive of the heights and I'm very complimentary of the process that we followed to reach this point or we've reached so far.
Great, thank you. Anybody else have a question?
Nope.
Okay.
Great.
Great, then, you know, I don't know if I have anything else. We'll go ahead and move on. Give us your final pitch for why voters should support you. And feel free to mention any endorsements if you like. We'll start with Kara.
Hey there. This has been wonderful, Eric. I appreciate everything that you've said. And in fact, I voted for you in the last election.
I don't know if you're supposed to admit that if you're challenging it.
I know, but I, I would say, so my one thing that sets me aside from, I think, any other candidate is, there's a couple of things, but one is that I don't take any donations from any, anybody. So I can't be swayed. There's no reason why I'm not here to fight for the people. I, I realize that there are things that I may not know as well as Eric does. Obviously, you know, he's been on the council for two and a half years. He knows much more than I do, but I'm not afraid to learn and I definitely am always open to listen. And I've been blessed in a way with a family and friends that don't have the same political opinions that I do or ideas. And it's been amazing to be able to debate with them and listen and hear other people's true stories and realize that maybe I need to change how I feel because if I haven't personally experienced it, then it, I, I may have a swayed opinion. And so I'm always going to be here to support the people and to listen. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
First of all, Kara, thank you for your kind words and for voting for me. And also thank you for your willingness to serve our community. And regardless of the outcome of this particular election, I hope that you'll continue your interest in serving our community. And I would love to have a conversation with you sometime about ways that you could do that, either as a council member or there are many other ways. To the board, thank you for hosting us this afternoon. I hope that one day soon we'll be able to do an event like this in person once again.
Hope so.
Paulson, I'm running for reelection for city council, position number two, because I love Vancouver. The pandemic has had profound impact on our city, but we've always been a resilient place. I'm committed to making strategic investments that ensure an equitable recovery for all of the residents while and issues that matter most to our community. Collaboratively and compassionately, reducing the unhoused population in our community, addressing the skyrocketing costs of housing, supporting transportation strategies that improve safety and mobility for all users, and increasing the number of businesses and family wage jobs in our community so that fewer individuals have to commute such great distances and/or even to a different state in order to find a family wage job. I'm the only candidate for this position with over a dedicated, thoughtful and collaborative leadership to the city of Vancouver. I've been endorsed by two former Vancouver mayors, current and former Vancouver City Council members, dozens of community members. I've also gotten organizational endorsements from the Vancouver Firefighters Local 452, as well as the Clark County Association of Realtors. I do take donations, but I have a mixed feeling about that because I agree with Kara that there is the appearance that taking of money can sway an individual. I have made it clear to folks when I've accepted contributions to my campaign that what they're getting is what they see, thoughtful leadership that's going to see all sides of an issue, not an ideologue, not a firebrand, not a predictable vote on one issue or another. And the folks who support me know that that's what they're contributing to. That's the kind of leadership that they want to see in Vancouver, and that's what they're investing in. It does cost money to get your message out to the voters. And as much as I'd like to support myself in getting the message out, I reluctantly accepted the fact that money is a part of politics. Vancouver is where I was raised, educated, built a career and raised a family. Vancouver is my home. I care deeply about our city. And I believe our best days lie ahead. To the board, I hope to earn your recommendation. And to the viewer at home, I hope to earn your vote. Thank you.
Great. Well, thank you very much to both of you and good luck.
Thanks so much.
All right. Thanks, guys. Bye.